Thursday, April twenty seventh, please take your seats.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Did you get a copy of the agenda?
Okay, fair enough.
Who brought the agendas for me?
I didn't say. Did you start that yet, Leo?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all three sub-minute present for Thursday, April twenty seventh. I have the town administrators just set that room to get some agendas for the public. Mr. Leo Martell recording for the citizens of Dunbar. Thank you, Leo. All right, Jim, will you give us the minutes from last time?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I had no amendments on.
I did get one in.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on those minutes?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Can you first? Ken, you first. Stand by.
I have to slide.
Do you have first?
In a moment, in a moment. Can I open up for public comment? Back row.
Um, I'll discuss it later.
Okay. And I'll close it for public comment. I'll go right to the town business. Ken, welcome to the meeting. You're on the agenda, please.
Okay. I'm always looking for reasons to, or ways to make the town look a little more attractive. And I was over at the library talking to Barry today. I saw the big square of dirt, right? Where the, um, the, uh, heat pump and all that kind of stuff is. And right now it's open. And I'm thinking back to the time when there used to be a pollinator garden in there. And Mary has a memorial bench, not Mary, um, I'm gonna say, has a memorial bench that was sitting in there in a burp. And I wondered if you guys would have any problem putting in a pollinator garden there. No cost to the town, no effort, no maintenance. This is all done through the master gardeners.
There, there's only one issue. The, uh, the contractor hasn't finished.
Yeah.
So there's, um, as part of the architect's plans, there's shrubbery going on each side of the door. And the stone around the building isn't finished, though.
Yeah.
And then it's gonna be hydro seeded, so.
But is there some way to kind of redirect in that one area about necessarily do that?
So you're talking about the left of the entrance, that square of dirt right there?
Yeah, yeah. Just that, that square in there. Right now, um, Nancy's bench is kind of stuck around the side. And has no relation, no relationship to the library, the library entrance.
Well, there's three, three benches out there, right?
Right, and less is than that, and then there's another one there. Yeah.
And you're thinking you want to move it?
Well, I would just, I'm thinking back to what it used to look like back before they did the renovations. And it was kind of a nice, um.
There was some plans there.
It was a tribute to Nancy. It was also a nice pollinator education, put in signs, stuff like that. And it fit with the library mission of educating people. So it just struck me that.
The only problem, Ken, is, uh, that section of the roof, that's the section that gets all the slide off from the other roof.
Yeah.
That's why that addition has the flat roof, so that the snow can come down, melt and go through the interior drains.
Yeah.
And, um, we've actually got to look at, uh, maybe putting a second, um, HVAC system next to the one that's existing there.
Yeah.
And then providing a little roof on them. So I'm not sure how much room will be left there when that's all said and done, but.
Yeah, great. Then, you know, they, they can work with very small area, a larger area, that sort of stuff. And it doesn't have to have to be, be the sort of thing that, um, and you can go ahead and hydro seed it. That just struck me as the kind of, kind of a whole, um, look to the building where if you could have a little color in there, pollinators, butterflies, that kind of stuff. It would really relate better to what the sort of things that Barry does with the library.
Only just because, um, they don't know. Tell me what a pollinator garden is.
Oh, it's, it's, um, planting, uh, planting native plants to encourage butterflies and things like that, the native pollinators. And right now it's in the state, um, the extension service. They're kind of pushing it because a lot of that stuff's being lost, the monarch, all that kind of stuff. And so they're encouraging people to put in, um, pollinator gardens. And I have heard, I don't know the details yet, that the school is also looking at doing something. I don't know what, what they have, that I'd be over in that area. And I thought, you know, you can do grass, or you can do something that adds a little color and it brings butterflies and bird baskets back to, uh.
I like the idea. The thing is, I'd like to get the contractor out of there. Finish it up. And if we can go in afterwards and then specify, specify where we want to put it exactly.
Okay.
And maybe give us a little drawing.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure the, um, you probably don't know, but that walkway originally went straight down the building and then around the front. And because there were three benches sitting there in an arc, we changed the walkway to go around the front of those benches. And so they're in a nice half circle arc coming back around.
Yeah.
To the front door, so.
I, I'd say we could.
Well, the, the one that really dominates is, is less than finished. Because from the corner, it's gotten a little brick pad that it's sitting on. And, you know, that was official. The other two were just sort of stuck there.
I, I'd say we, we, I, I like the idea. I, I, I like it a lot. I think it makes sense. I, I think, um, we just, why don't we delay wait till the contractor gets out of there? Then we can reassess of where we can, maybe do a walk with you and you can show us what you want to do. And as Dave said, a little sketch. Doesn't have to be architectural sketch, just a little sketch.
I try to work these things in stages, but I don't want to exercise the, um, design team, the UNH people. And that's like, it's a potential. If there is, then we'll wait and see where time goes and then I'll talk with them.
Okay. But I, I like the idea, but I, I'm, I'm to a point where I'm ready for the contractor to get up and walk, but I want them to finish their stuff.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the end of next week is when they're talking about wrapping that up. And then we wanted to put a drip line of that river stone.
Yeah.
Around the building, uh, the whole rest of the building, because we're getting too much splash up on the building. So we've been trying to protect them. We did this one, I think, last year. We're trying to get it better done, though. So I think once we do that and do the river stone, then let's look at it again. And then you can say this area right here.
That'd be great, you know?
Yeah.
As I say, there, there's no, um, critical timeline here.
Right.
Um, it's more, if I think that it may be of interest, then I can go the next step and talk to, get somebody to, you know, do it.
I, I think it would be of interest.
Yeah, I think so.
But I think that I just want to, you know, maybe that, maybe that's a little section isn't the best area. Maybe leave the benches in that area and maybe reset them or something like that. Do a garden there. So I think, like you're saying, let the contractor finish his job. And then we can reassess and maybe figure out a plan.
Now, even if we did a pollinator garden, we couldn't even leave the benches where they are, right?
I mean, they're, they're not, it, it, it is sentimental. The place Nancy's bench used to be there, I just felt it'd be nice to put back.
It's kind of coming from above the public.
Next to the, uh.
I think the benches will sit that way for when the bandstand is in use. You know, people can sit out there, listen to the music, see the people walking around versus being in a corner there, you know? I think that was, that was the reason why those people, and, and you know, uh, the people who put those benches there, they kind of like were given that authority to put them there.
Oh, yes, correct.
You know, so it's kind of like, kind of nasty to kind of pull them out of there if they really like them.
And that's why I, I don't want to do anything prematurely. We just don't let things settle down.
Makes sense, yeah.
And then we'll reassess and figure out what, what we can do to be best. I like the idea, though. I do like the idea. So I want to continue to keep, keep thinking in that direction. We want to have gracious.
Yeah, and you guys will let me know, you know, what might be appropriate.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Yeah, it won't be very long.
Except the conversation we were having, Dave.
Yeah.
You can talk to Mike or you.
Sure.
This, this is kind of off the record, I guess. It wasn't why I came down here. I don't know if you have my sister's contact, but somebody should speak to her.
Okay.
And if there's any interest, so the board may want to talk about what they want to do with the property. If they wanted to do a piece and then contact her.
That'd be awesome. Ken, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I already have that all.
Yeah.
Well, I think Bob Martell did the, uh, legwork on it already.
Uh, we've been, uh, let's go. Okay, um, number two. We want to review the town investment policy. And this is a, uh.
So during this, this, um, twenty twenty-two audit, the auditor's been in the office all week. Um, the, one of the questions that they had on their, um, my list was to, uh, see if the town had been reviewing the town's investment policy under state RSA. Is required that the town, uh, approving review the, uh, the policy on an annual basis? So, um, it's been quite a few years, um, proactive in bringing it forward, updating it slightly with signature names. And then the auditor did say that if the board approves it, then he would note it on our twenty-two audit that we have gone ahead.
I mean, um, it's a conservative, very conservative in the sense, I, the first thing that comes out to me is, uh, total investments maturing, one year under, has got to be a hundred percent. And ninety days or under, at least half of it's got to be, uh, so it's very conservative. There's no long-term investments, which I, I kind of like.
I've seen, uh, and looking at the different amounts that have been earned through some of these funds that have been there a while, that it goes up and down like a roller coaster, how much is earned on those things? Some funds earn, earn two hundred dollars one year and two dollars the next year. And, um, who takes care of that? Is that all done through the treasurer?
So the treasurer takes care of the cash accounts for the operating budget. And part of her RSA is that she cannot lose any money that is voted on by the taxpayers to reason appropriate. So that's why she has to be very conservative in maybe coming up with a contract with the bank that we do business with, that we will pay interest on a, one of our accounts. Whereas the revolving account that we use to pay the bills, that one does not earn interest. And then she also took it a little bit further and today you can earn points through credit card purchases. The town uses the credit card with all the different departments pretty regularly. So she's able to recoup points for that, so that you might see every quarter, half a year, a five hundred dollar spike because she has gotten, collected her points. And she'll do it again before the end of the year, but.
Do you think it would be wise to have the treasurer come in in front of us and explain some of the investment type things she's doing, only so we're aware of them?
Um, the only thing that I'm aware of, other than earning interest on the bigger account, is that she has a CD investment for the larger accounts that she maintains, which is the fire department fund and the conservation fund. Those she can take sixty, eighty, a hundred thousand out of their balance and put it in a thirty-day, sixty-day, or ninety-day interest earning, um, account. But if she knows that, for example, the fire department's going to be withdrawing thirty thousand dollars, she would have to make sure that she leaves that fund in the checking account, basically, so that we can pay that bill when the warrant.
How does she know all that is what you want her?
She, well, she works with the warrant articles and, uh, the office staff and the other departments have no input. She basically takes the money if she feels that it should, it's time to invest it. And that's her, her policy.
Basically, the policy dealing is by, uh, RSA, what they can, uh, what they can make investments in. Money markets, CDs, repurchase agreements, interest-bearing accounts, federal insured bank accounts. And they're kind of restrictive. It's not like they can just, uh, do a, like a startup company down the road.
Right, so a couple of different things.
Can't hit the stock market.
No, correct.
I did read this.
We have, um, the town forest, uh, who is not under the umbrella of the town clerk. And he was appointed as the, um, trustee or the caretaker of the funds for the town forest. And he does do investments. And every month when I have to enter journals for, um, revenue, I also have to, uh, enter a transaction for change of, um, it's called change of investment. So some months, it, it's a credit of three thousand two hundred dollars. Other months, it goes up twelve hundred dollars. And then there's a separate line that I document in that same statement that's strictly the interest. So he has a policy with his investor that he's got so many dollars that he has been guaranteed that they will not go below. Um, and then on the other hand, the trustee of the trust funds, they work through New Hampshire P-Dip. And that company pretty much manages a lot, just about all the government, um, trust accounts. And it's only just this past year, in twenty twenty-two, that we saw a change of interest earned from month to month for each one of those funds from two cents to seven cents to up to twenty-five to three hundred dollars. So someone from the charitable trust reached out to New Hampshire P-Dip and said, this is not acceptable. So now they're doing, they're investing the money a little bit differently. But again, those are funds they can't touch the principal and they can't, you can't lose money. You can only earn interest. So it's, um, when you're asking a private citizen who's taken an appointed volunteer position to invest or do a little bit more, they get very sensitive and not wanting to be responsible for any bad investment decisions. So it's really, uh, it's, it's not their money, so they have to look at it very carefully.
Which they should.
Yeah.
I, I have no problem with the policy. I think it's kind of, uh, I find it restrictive, which is the way it should be because it's tax, it's our, it's our money. We don't want to have it on risky investments.
I think if you recall, a few years ago.
You're looking for guaranteed income on.
Correct.
Yeah, uh, a few years ago, um, one of the trustee of the trust funds, Jason DeBroer, put a warrant article on the, um, only because he was being bombarded by these investors saying, we can make money for you. We want you to adopt this. And he said, okay, fine, I'll put it on the warrant. If the voters vote for it, then we'll look into other sources from New Hampshire P-Dip. And it was like, gone, so. Didn't, not pass.
Yeah, I, I'd rather keep it conservative and secure it. Although the last couple of years with interest rates, I mean, uh, I think this is the first year we're going to get some decent returns, only because of inflation. Okay, and all in favor of adopting this policy?
Aye.
Aye. Did you make a motion to?
Well, no, I did not make a motion. Let's reverse that. I can make a motion to adopt the investment policy as presented.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. Are we, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The motion before the, uh.
Now it passes down to the treasurer. She said she was signing it after the warrant.
And please make sure the, uh, the auditor knows.
Yep.
Okay. Last time we had a great, uh, we, discussion on the town hall second floor reservation form and the policy. Uh, I sat with Lean and I, uh, I gave her the changes we made. I have the original one we made changes to. And she re, uh, she re, uh, drafted them. And so they're up for final approval. I'll take a peek, take a peek. I'll switch her around. The, the, for, the, the one we looked at before previously is on the back page, so you can see where the changes were made. Uh, I've seen my pen scratching marks where I, uh, took your input and added the changes. Okay. And I think, uh, we all agree that this would be a living document in the sense that, uh, if we got to change it, we change it. We'll just see how it goes. But we have to have, I think as we go forward, we have to have some, um, something in place to get started.
So the three, there's actually three documents that you'll be looking at tonight. Um, it's the second hall, uh, the town hall second floor use policy, the reservation policy, and then the MOU that the library's been trying to, uh, update for, whereas the last one's been quite.
Do they take those out of the MOU?
We did, and I went over them with Mike, so.
No, the original one's on the back page. Justin, you see? Pass it to Dave. You see how I made the changes?
Yep.
Dave, here's the other one. The changes made, I'll give you those right now. I need the old one. Sorry. That was the old one.
You leave this quick so you can act on it, Ken.
Yeah, you see how we, that's the old one. I made those changes.
Mike, I just noticed that those are also repeated on your list at number eight, nine, and ten.
Okay, that makes the agenda a little bit smaller.
It does.
Okay, so we have consensus to move forward. I don't think we have a vote on this. It's just consensus that we all agree this form is going to be inequipped.
No, we're making a motion to accept it, right?
Oh, the policy, yes, yes.
Make a motion to accept the Dunbar Town Hall second floor policy.
I'll second.
And, uh, I like to just, uh, with the reservation form is, uh, is just an addendum to that, so, um, any on discussion on that?
Nope.
Nope.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Lean, this is in your pile.
Okay, just for the record, um, I've had a request to be on the agenda for May's eleventh from the garden club. So what I'd like to try to do is reach out to all the five different organizations that are interested in res- reserving that space to come to the same meeting. So the board says it once and the board can hand out the, um, policy, the reservation form, and we can try to, you know, make sure that everybody's under the same, on the same page floor.
The only thing that's tough about that is, um, different groups have different requirements, so we probably will call it up at one at a time.
Oh, yeah, the only thing at all here, we don't have to repeat.
Right, but I just would like them to hear what the board has to say, so you don't all, all say hearing the same thing.
I'm just saying they're going to ask us different requirements as they come up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we go through each one. They have, they can have their own individual questions, but there's a lot of stuff we can talk about, which will be general, applicable to everybody. I think it's a good idea, Lean, to have them all at one time. Then we can do, talk to them individually, not individually, but have their own time as we go forward. Okay. We have the, I, I signed with the town hall, um, memorandum agreement. It may not be listed separately, but that was a part of the, uh.
It was down, it is down on town.
Okay.
It is.
Well, then we'll, it's a strike about lib, let's keep library together and library slash town hall. Again, there was a couple of changes made and, uh, I struck out the thing about, um, they, as a tenant, they really don't have control of the upper floor. And we make, the sub-board makes the determination of how the second floor will be used. And that was stricken as per, uh, we all agreed two weeks ago. Uh, the policy was updated by Lean with, uh, based upon our notes.
So the board approves that, then I'll pass it on to the library, have the trustees sign it.
The old one should be on behind Dave, so you can make reference to it if you need to.
We'll move on to the town clerk appointment, so we'll review it.
Yeah. All right, um, Dave, can I get a talk?
Yep.
Okay. Um, there's three appointments. The first one is to the energy committee. I'd appoint David Abrefield, Abrefield to the energy committee. Uh, you know, with a term ending March twenty twenty-six. Second, I'd appoint Brett Sinclair to the conservation committee with a term ending March twenty twenty-six. And the third one is I appoint Jonathan Agreve to the planning board with a term ending twenty twenty-five. And, but the thing is Jonathan will be an alternate member of the planning board.
I'll second that.
And, uh, this, any discussion on these, Lean? Were these recommendations from the various committees?
Yeah, they were, and then the, they contacted the town court and I played up the, uh, paperwork.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David?
Aye.
Okay. We'll sign these and this will go to the town clerk and they each can call him in and have him sworn in.
Just a little withdrawal.
I'm sorry?
A little withdrawal.
It's a memo from the town clerk.
Right.
Oh, okay.
It's a memo that, um, just that, we have a member, uh, who was, uh, she did not be, she didn't want to be reappointed to the town hall registration committee. We, she was appointed again, but she's been, uh, it's been withdrawn.
So I was thinking of the motion to withdraw her from the.
Go ahead.
She's a sitting, uh, member of the committee?
She can resign.
Yeah, she can resign. There's no need for you guys to deal with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the town clerk wants to know.
It's just a matter of her res, sending a letter of resignation.
Right.
Did you mention the name?
Uh, for the public, I said, uh, Cindy Lou Pennard of the town hall registration committee. Uh, she does not wish to continue to serve on that committee.
Do you understand her?
There's no reason why.
Okay.
Dave, did you find any issues with the, uh, did you see the change I made? Justin, the changes on this one here are absolutely, that's the old one. See what I did?
Want to make a motion?
No, they're all done.
I heard you guys talking over there.
Justin wants us to move along.
He's a young guy. He's got a date.
Yeah, Dave is my fellow.
Okay, we're up to, I believe, eleven.
Yep. Stephanie Alexander?
Yes. Stephanie Alexander sent us an email. And we're copying it for the hazard mitigation committee. The town, congratulations, the town's new haz- hazmat plan has been formally approved by FEMA and is valid for five years. And so we have attached an approved hazard mitigation plan twenty twenty-three. She says, well done. So again, for the public, uh, hazard mitigation plan is if, and we have a catastrophe, uh, we can, uh, we can participate in any FEMA funds which may be available to that, help deal with the catastrophe. We have to have a plan for it. And it's been, a lot of hard work went into that. Thank you to all the volunteers who worked on that. You're welcome.
Do you want to make a motion for this?
I'll start. I'll start. No, we don't make a motion. It's, it's just a memorandum agreement. So this has just got to go to them for final signature. Thank you for bringing it up. We have a, um, New Hampshire State Circus Liberal Auction. Do we have any, anything going on auction?
Nope.
I don't think we do this stuff.
Well, no, actually, John said he's got an old trailer and he believes the highway department has one as well.
Okay.
It's a good time and they've been noticed twice, so this is just a reminder of that.
All right.
It's a memo from TA.
I'm sorry?
Memo from TA number thirteen.
Yeah.
Oh, I think we.
No, I skipped one, DOT twelve.
I like that.
Twelve, we have a, uh, state of New Hampshire sent us a, uh, they'll, basically advise that there's, there'll be work by continental paving on which road here?
Chuy.
Chuy.
Chuy Road.
They probably already been on there, but I did.
Starting April twenty fifth.
I did give it to the, uh, road agent. They asked that we communicate that to him so we, they don't interfere with his work.
Okay.
I'll just show the top.
Yeah. I wonder if it's going to be, it's probably going to be delays here. So maybe worthwhile to say delays maybe, I couldn't, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth is already started.
It's already started. I don't know what kind of work they've started over there yet.
And they're going to be completed on.
Just says, just says paving. I can't imagine it's going to be any different than normal.
We'll be noticing.
Small paving.
Small delay, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, thirteen, Dave, now.
That one from Trans Am.
Yeah.
There's typing a lot. Try to save some space.
Right.
Um, so about a year ago, I mentioned to the board that there, uh, after the, during the COVID periods, there was an opportunity for municipalities to apply for a dot gov, um, emails, which, um, put you in a domain that's a lot more secure than all the other, like dot org, dot com, emails. And due to staffing and workload and whatnot, um, I was approached by the, um, fire department. One of their, um, volunteers is an IT tech. And in light of the situation we had that occurred this week through the phone lines, I think that it's probably important for us to move ahead. It's a free service. The conversion doesn't cost anything and they will tie all existing emails that have a domain under Dunbar and NH through this, um, uh, gov instead of the org. And that will give us an added, uh, security protection.
Who controls the server?
The domain is done, is protected through our, um.
State New Hampshire.
No, no, this, well, the domain is by the government, but our own personal IT has shadow protection and other things that we have on our server.
Right.
But why aren't they setting it up like that?
They will, they can. And, but they'll be working with, um, Brian.
Do we have any objections to this? I, it's just, I think it's a step in security. Jim, any discussion?
Yeah, and it's actually been advised by our insurance company that we should pursue that because, um.
Won't help you on your phone calls, though.
No, but well, a voice over IP, I don't know, maybe. We should be able to block it.
So we have consensus of letting go for the government?
Yep.
Just be aware of any incidental costs. I hate to be, uh.
No, just, will, will not be any cost, though.
So they say.
It's an envelope that goes with it.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I'm also working with primex with this, so.
Okay, we get a contract from Wood Waste, disposal fees through twenty twenty-nine. I think Woody already talked to us about this earlier.
Well, he had spoken to you and he said there was a contract forthcoming and I was reviewing some notes in one of the follow-ups that I had to, um, act for action items. And I reached out to Woody, asking if he'd gotten more than just the verbal and, um, or the one single page that he had signed. But this one is a lot clearer and has more information, so we'll be, um.
I thought the disposal fees went up in that contract compared to what we were told. I thought they were supposed to stay at eighty-five for a couple of years. And they go up every year on that.
See that page? See that page?
Yeah, it's eighty-five dollars for tonne goes up, uh, to ninety, ninety-five, one hundred, one oh five, one ten, and one fifteen.
You think it was like a three year before? I thought.
Can we check that before we sign it?
Yep. I think you already signed the original single sheet that Woody brought with the board?
We, we, we.
Have the rates on it.
Yeah, we just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure that it was correct. I could be wrong. I mean, we've gone over a lot of numbers, but.
We can sign it next time if we have to. All right, um, I have to, one of our residents, uh, must have heard that we're in, um, um, looking for roof repairs. He gave us, uh, some, some input about what he would do for roofs and I just, I don't want to say his name. But I think as I gave the gentleman some kudos for at least, uh, reaching out to the town. I think is we got to send it out, we got to send out the bin. I want to talk about the, uh, the garages in a moment. But I thought it was awfully nice of, I give the gentleman, uh, some kudos for being innovative. But the thing is, uh, we have a contracting process we have to go through.
I did explain that to him in the email.
Yeah.
I said the price put you at a level of a big policy, uh, private policy.
Okay, that's just, boy, I, I, there's no action needed on that tape. And we even oriented them. Wow, okay, we got privacy doors. A quote from, uh, Greg Miller for office privacy doors that we were talking about earlier in the year between in the hallway here. They had some clear glass inserted. There's different options here. Did you get it?
I got it.
Yeah.
My only concern, he says what door is not able to, to fit the opening now or something. Um, I just don't know why he can't order a custom size door like that. To, to fit the opening now, so we don't, I don't want to shrink the opening any smaller.
Cause I think. Shrimp up, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we still gotta think about wheelchair accessible as well to get through here, so it's gotta be wide enough for that, you know?
But he did, where's he talking about the change? The doors changed.
There's three options.
I was gonna say, there's three separate options.
Right.
I thought one of them's going with a door that fits in and then he'd have to shim both sides.
Right. No dimensions on that, though.
Yeah. Cause I thought it says in there that he can't find, get a door to fit the size right now.
The other option was, uh, Dave kind of suggested would be using a thermonuclear replacement panels on the existing doors. It's prob- probably, it's actually more expensive to do it that way than putting new doors in.
Yeah.
And option C is we can, those doors could get that height.
I'm having trouble figuring out if it's quoted as four.
The roof on the, uh, highway? The flat roof, if the rubber?
It was the roof. There's roof, there's insulator, insulation replacement in there. And he's adding, in that quote, there's adding metal to around the whole inside, the bed. On the radio.
No, I, I can, clues are trying, but I think is we, we gotta go through a regular, um, uh, process.
Plus I think it's a little above and beyond what we're looking to do at this point.
And the thing is, um, I don't believe he's in business, that's his, his principal business too. He's not a co- he's not a company that does that on a regular basis.
Yeah, and again, at that price, we need to get other quotes.
Appropriate quotes, yes. So I give him credit for at least reaching out. And the thing is, I think it's worthwhile. I give him some innovation points, but, okay, let's go back to the doors. Yeah, please. Um, I'm not sure, I, I like, before we change, it goes, I have the dimensions to make sure we're handicapped.
Yeah, I think Dave can measure them or put his input on those sizes and things of that nature.
So he, so he's our handyman and I thought I would start the ball rolling, cause I did get, Dave said that he could reach out to someone at Belt Aids to get the insert prices, so to follow our bid policy, three telephone quotes.
Right.
Um, I went ahead and asked him to give us a quote if he was interested in doing that work and he was. So this is the quote that he's given us. And he's given us multiple options, so that if we don't work.
So this, the, um, option A is just providing the panel on each door?
Correct.
Okay. It's, it's not a lot of money for the, uh, for the glass. I like the idea of having glass where you can see, uh, someone coming to the door. And I hope with the circulation control in the winter time.
Is that going with a special kind of glass or just going with?
Temper glass, temper, tempered glass. I think it's required to have a tempered.
They don't have to be.
Yeah.
In public, yeah.
In a public home, they're all tempered.
Yep.
No, my, my question for that, it really was pointing towards like a, not a bulletproof glass person, but, uh, uh, something of that nature, not just tempered.
We're talking just half light panels, so.
I think he did a few options. I'm not sure of them. What he was kind of looking for is that the insert kit that you men mentioned, Dave, that you could get. And then the other option is just to get a tempered glass and then trim it out on both sides.
In the door?
Right.
Not changing the door, just trim it out and make it fit the door?
And then I don't remember what the third one is. The doors itself replacing.
I thought it was replacing the doors.
Replacing the four doors.
How much was the last one, four doors?
I read it last week.
Doors are six fifty each.
Just for the, that's actually less expensive than, uh,
I don't think that includes labor though, right?
Yeah.
Cause a lot of labor tearing out, tearing out a, uh, re- figuring a whole door, then replace, then replace the door.
That is the cost for the doors and the channels only. It does not include labor or any of this, so. It's probably gonna be done a lot with labor. Um, I'm thinking we might be able to go with the oil tank room. There's the two steps that it stays. Pressure treated, a screen door for the opening into the crawl space. I thought that, that was extremely reasonable.
The, um, oil tank room is over here?
That's correct.
And we need a screen door for it?
Well, you go in there, there's this huge hole in the back of that room, so if that door ever gets blown open or left open, critters, skunks, whatever can get into this open. There's nothing in front of it. They took it out when they were cleaning it out and they never replaced anything, so he would put a, it's just a screen to allow the airflow to continue.
Into, into here in the basement?
I was gonna say.
Uh huh.
All right.
The way it sounded like a screen door going into the, uh,
It's a screen.
To build the sound stairs, uh, pressure treated and a screen door for the opening and the crawl space.
I think probably put a hinge on it so it can more for a lift or something.
I would say that we accept his proposal for the oil tank room and we'll get some more, um, options on the other door.
You read my mind. I was thinking the same thing. Go up, Justin. And all in favor of the thing is, is we have, we all, we have consensus for, lean, go ahead and go ahead and go for it. For the oil tank room, we need two more quotes on the doors.
What about the options? Do you like the options he gave? Just chain the panels or?
No, the doors were all crooked in there, so I think we should stick with the replacement glass panels, but I think, I think the panels can be much cheaper than that, so.
No, it was, uh, option A?
Option A, but with, uh, I'll have, uh, Jim, the guy that met with her for the locks, go through some options for.
Okay.
Well, I know he slammed now, so it might take him a few weeks to get.
Things, I want to make sure as lean goes forward, I don't want to get all these other options. If we're gonna, we're looking at option A.
I think option A.
Option A.
So apples and apples.
Right.
And the, uh, the doors are kind of aesthetic there too, you know, with the age of the building and that, but I just think the panels in them would. We're gonna do three of them?
Four.
Four.
Two, two here and two on the other.
Yeah, cause people will come into the vestibule area and they'll look to the left and the right.
Okay.
And they should be able to look in there and know if somebody's standing right outside the door or be careful when you're.
Yeah, I think the doors down this end are easier, cause they're just flexible.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the ones that are down here and that are. So you're gonna get two more quotes for option A?
He's gonna get me one and then I'll.
Get one other.
Think about, working call about.
The inserts on these ones here are easy. I think seventy or under all this for my office, so. Plus labor. It's, it's the other ones that are a little bit more difficult.
Yep.
Okay. Seventeen. The grant master has struck again. Dear Chief Herman, I am pleased to inform that the grant funding in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred two dollars has been approved for the Dunbar Police Department. The time period for this fund is from April twelfth through September twenty, twenty twenty-three. And this is for, uh, tasers, body worn cameras, cruiser cameras, ballistic vests. Uh, it's basically an equipment grant. And he's got all this all grant and very, right here. I don't, we don't have to do anything. It's been approved.
Yeah, that, we already.
Yeah, no, but it's, it's been approved at the higher level, so this is from the, uh, state of New Hampshire.
He had approached the board with the paperwork that you signed a couple of months back.
Right.
So Dave, just as a reminder that the, this is unanticipated money, but it's a pass through, because when the bills come in, the invoices come in, we submit them to the state, the state reimburses us, but it's already spent money. And I did double check with the auditor and he said that you have your operating budget and then you have all these special accounts that don't involve the operating budget. And it's just making sure that we're consistent with the journal entries and how we post them and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, cause I want to make sure that say, something ever happens to lean, we know where the money is, we're to find it.
Well, when, when document.
She can find it all, but nobody else gets it.
One document she prepared last year, I want to keep it as a living document. Remember that, what, summer sheet?
Right, which this could go on now.
Make a summer sheet, lean, like you did last year.
I ran a report of, um,
No, you did a summer.
You did a summer sheet.
You started it for this year for me already. You showed me a copy.
Okay, I'm very tired. I apologize.
But the thing is, basically you did a sheet with, uh, it just lists all the, all the, like, the special grants we get.
Well, we did that when we were looking at the, what we had for funding for the library.
No, you did it. You did it for everything across all towns.
You started one for this year already for us.
Summer sheet, you said as well?
Yeah, yeah. But it was really helpful, I thought.
I did too, and, and it's so at the end of the year, we, we're not looking at and say, hey, you missed this fifty thousand here, where is that one? And oh, it's right here, I just didn't look.
Okay, I think I know which one you're talking about.
It was a single page. You had it really subtle.
So we should put this on there and, you know, show it us in the past.
Oh, I will, I will. Yeah, I have to.
Do we have to make a motion to accept that?
No.
Because we've already, we've submitted this paperwork, we just, we no motion to accept it.
Okay, we got a surplus option. Okay.
That's it.
That was it. I'm gonna open for Bubba Coleman.
Okay, uh, about two or three weeks ago, I, I, uh, came into some information that the, a name on one of the war memorials is misspelled.
Wow.
And it came to my attention, so I checked it out and yeah, it's, it's wrong. So how do you memorialize someone if you don't know his name? So I contacted, uh, Perry Monuments and they said it's a pretty easy fix. But I haven't been able to get them over here to look at it yet. And I knew they were here this week.
Was it a misspelling or was it a?
It's a misspell.
It's not somebody spelled their name that way before?
No, it's a misspell. Matter of fact, I got a copy of the original.
Yeah.
It was wood. And then the original, the, the R that should be there, the top of the R is missing. And so it looks like an H and they put an H in there.
But it's easily, uh, written.
Well, they told me it's easily, uh, easy to fix. Um, like I said, I've been calling them weekly and they keep telling me they'll get somebody.
In what capacity have you been calling them? As, as just a private citizen?
Well, that's who I am.
I miss my, what's my?
No, you have to be fit, right, lean?
No, the thing is, what I would do, if you'd be so kind, since you've already initiated it, um, let us know next time you get an estimate.
I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I'm in favor of correcting the issue.
Yeah, they said it won't be much, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just.
Just say.
Out of the cemetery budget.
Um.
Why not?
They're coming out to do some stuff in the cemetery.
They, they did this week, yeah. Right?
I think they're coming again too, because we have some services coming up. Um, they're setting some stones and stuff.
I know they were supposed to be etching a bench in there this week.
Yeah, so they actually, they have some cornerstone and something else.
Is that on the cemetery budget?
They're coming. I think they're coming soon.
Yeah, but again.
Meetings next, next Tuesday, so it's just our, our agenda, so. Um, I'm just saying, they're coming out soon, so maybe we can take a look at it then.
Yeah, I sent them pictures also. I did send them pictures of the error.
Could you, could you send the pictures to Justin?
Uh, yeah, I should, should be able to.
Okay. And, uh, will, will you be out here when they come out?
Mostly, typically not. We mark it out and then they come.
Well, send it to Don.
I was gonna say, Don.
He's our liaison.
Don will get on it.
Right, right, yeah. He's our liaison.
You know.
Oh, order them to me and I'll.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll send them.
That way, I want to, I want to make sure they correct the right one.
Well, again, I, I sent them pictures, you know?
Okay.
And so they should get it, I mean, you know?
Okay. Thank you for being, that's a good catch. Thank you.
Well, like I said, from what I understand, people have known about it for years.
Oh, jeez.
And nobody's done anything about it.
I already heard about this in another meeting. I forget which meeting it was.
I've never heard of it. I've been here nineteen years and I haven't heard it.
I, I, I know that, uh, some people have told me, oh yeah, we knew about that.
Let's surprise, let's surprise the town and fix it, so next time someone looks at it.
You know, again, you know, the fellow went to see his father and he went to see it and they got back to me and asked me about it and I said, well, that's, that's wrong. Because how do you memorialize someone, get the wrong name there?
Totally agree. Totally agree.
So I will call them again, but I'll send you the, uh,
Yeah.
the pictures, uh, Justin, and.
And, and they give you a quote, just bring it in and we, we'll authorize it and make it happen.
Yeah, right. And, and well, I'm sure, yeah. And I, I'm, that's what I said, I'm trying to get the quote to give to you guys. I spoke with Dave briefly about it, right? And, you know, that's what he told me, tried to get a price, but nobody's called me back, so.
Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Tom Administrator.
Um, our auditors were here Monday through today and they, um, were a larger group earlier in the week and they made some really good progress. He's just buttoning up the five thirty-five, which is our financial statement. He was able to, um, tie it into the twenty twenty-one audit, which is a good thing. And so they're just, um, probably gonna be finalizing the remainder of the audit probably remotely. And then they'll schedule, uh, an exit conference, cause I, they realize that they haven't been able to schedule one with the, the town for the last two audits, because they picked one up in mid-year and then piggybacked the second one right on top of that. But they assured us that they would be meeting with us to discuss the five thirty-five financial statement.
Time frame?
Which is, um,
August?
I was shooting for, uh, the MS one is required by September first at the DRA, so I was hoping like end of August, um, and that we would get information from them when that finding, when that five thirty-five is ready to sign and release to the state.
Okay.
So.
Anything else?
That's all I'm gonna share for.
I'd like to bring one thing up. Did you get the report from the town clerk regarding the minutes of the town meeting?
Um, last Friday, I, when I, um, sent her notice or a reminder, um, she did come to my office and say that she was having difficulties uploading the form from the state for reporting the election officers. And so I went into the website. It came up very quickly. She asked me to save it on the S drive. So she was filling out the MS one twenty-three, which is the election results. And she made no mention of the, um, minutes, but she's been put on notice and it's been a little, it's been almost a week.
Okay. Gentlemen, for the, what, help me, what, what does the RSA stipulate for the minutes to be done?
The, the DRA stipulates that those two forms are required tw- twenty days after town meeting. So we've passed that period, so now I'll get the emails on a weekly basis saying that we haven't met that. So I'll, I'll double check again and see if she's done anything with it, cause I.
I just don't want to wait till the end of the year to wait to get this.
I can't set the tax rate without it, so she will need to submit that.
Any comments, gentlemen? I just want to, that's a concern.
I think she's making some progress. I just double check what she's saying.
All right, well, I'm concerned. I, and she, her plate's always full and I realize that, but this is a document, again, tax rate setting and all that information is required.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, to the board. I'm gonna go with, uh, Dave first. Talk us about the library.
Um, I don't know, uh, the last time I was in, that I had the walkthrough with the architects. We get the substantial completion.
Yes.
Okay, so we get the substantial completion letter and, um, our warranty is starting after we receive that letter from them. I think Lean, Lean got the letter. And, um, so there's a one year warranty on everything that's been done there. There were notes of, I don't know, maybe eight or nine things, small miscellaneous items that we already talked about. Um, they're still being finished up and they noticed to them and they held back appropriate amount of money from the final payment, um, to our builder for that.
Who did?
The architects.
Okay.
So, uh, they, they'd submitted a payment and I asked to hold off till the architects walked through that with me the following week, which Lean did.
Yeah.
And they walked through and they sent dollar amounts to the items, you know, touching up paint, touching up rails. All the odds and ends. They put a dollar figure. All the odds and ends, they put a dollar figure to it, I think it was about eight thousand dollars.
That's correct.
And um, and they, and they held back twenty two hundred and so on dollars for their landscaping to finish up, so. They felt that was a sufficient amount of money.
When do you think they'll be walking away completely?
I would say within the next few weeks, um.
Okay, that would, that will not preclude us from letting people use the upstairs.
No, okay, it's all miscellaneous items, it's all touching up paints and stuff like that.
One, one thing I noticed, I walked through with uh, with Mary into the foyer downstairs, one thing I noticed that I think is the restroom, there's no restroom signs, this is occupied and vacant. And I think uh, maybe a small sign says restroom would be appropriate, you know, if I could make, have Lean go ahead buy that appropriately.
Just a placard or something.
Yeah, a little placard says restroom.
Um, it seems every day I come into that building, I get hit with another question.
Yeah.
Um, the girls last night at the town hall restoration committee, two of them had pocketbooks and. Said it'd be nice if there was hangers in the restroom for the pocketbooks, and I'm like, you put them on the back of the toilet?
There is no back.
They didn't like the answer. There's a backs of the toilets, yeah, but anyway, um. You know, I was just like, what did you do in the old days? Like, well, there's always been hooks and stuff, so. I don't know where we can put one, but maybe we'll consider that too, it seemed like every time I walked in.
Can, can we just mount one to the back of the door like every?
Yeah, that's where most.
The back of the door?
We could, I hate to put anything heavy, cause some people put heavier things on the backs of the doors and hanging signs and everything else.
That's just not, it doesn't, it's your personal belongings, we have to put it on the floor and it's urgent.
Same thing.
So what do we, everything else is brass, they do?
On the back, very, during the time or something like that.
Brass?
That, yeah, if we can get Joe Marie to look for a couple brass hooks, we can screw on.
Like cold hooks, cold hooks to put on the back of the door? I think that's appropriate, that's, that's reasonable.
If we get them small enough, they'll just put whatever they need to, won't be so big that they hang.
So the main reason town hall restoration committee meeting met, um, is I get an email stating that since there was a change, they thought we all should meet. I wasn't aware of any change, I told them, on, and they were in, in discussion of the library open house. And I'm like, well, select, they no changes, so what changes are you talking about? Cause I wasn't aware of anything, so we met. And apparently. Um, Mary had put in her library meeting minutes that they were gonna have town hall upstairs tours. And a couple months later, she put that the town hall restoration committee was gonna be giving the tours. And now from what I understand is, Mary has taken the tours out of the library grand opening altogether.
That's because the board had mentioned.
Yeah, we didn't make any final decision, but I, I wasn't aware of that, so they were telling me there was a change, I'm like, I don't know if there's any change, cause we didn't say. Well, don't do it, what Mike said was, if it's a rainy, gloomy, muddy day, we don't want people traveling around up there, cause the floors were just recently done.
But the thing is, she must have read between the lines, cause when I talked to her last Thursday, she says she already took it off.
Yeah, well, I was unaware of that, so they were telling me there was a change, I didn't know if it changed, so we had a meeting. But it was a productive meeting anyway, because I said, you know, I know the library was having the open house. But the building as a whole wasn't ready, we wanted to finish up our odds and ends so that looked more presentable outside. And uh, we had, our, our upstairs was a couple weeks behind them with the floor finishings and walls and everything else and stairs, so. Um, I asked them to look at dates coming up and see what they thought, and there was some, some suggestions going back to wait till Old Home Day. And um, but I said, I thought it was, we're gonna be using this, cause it's ready to use now. So, um, we were looking at dates and June tenth. Came up as what they thought was a good date, and I didn't know what the, I said I would bring it to the board tonight.
What date is that?
It's a Saturday, it's uh. Let's see here, it's the second Saturday in June.
Do they wish to, they basically ask for people to show up?
Um, what they wanna do is, they would like to have um, kind of on the same thing as Old Home Day, uh, we're gonna see if we're getting like hamburger and hot dogs. And either sell them at fifty cents or have them given away from the town for free, just for people to come up, check the room out, walk through the room. And they were also gonna have um, speak with George Holt to see if his local band would play up there during a few hours a day, so they're talking like. You know, noon to three or noon to four, something like that. Um, so he'd be, they'd be playing upstairs there.
And what would you be calling that? Just a opening, grand opening or?
Could be a grand opening and ribbon cutting for the second four times.
I think four hours is a long time, I'd, I'd make, I don't think two more reasonable?
Twelve to three?
I think three is. Twelve to three is reasonable.
They asked if this like, when we're coming, I said yes.
Especially if you're gonna do burgers and dogs and stuff.
Yeah, twelve, three, yeah.
Twelve, three?
Yep, that's fine.
Four o'clock is.
So to three.
I'm sorry.
Eleven to, eleven to two, something like that.
Eleven to two would be good too.
So you're at it, lunchtime.
That, that'd be more, that might get a more, people are coming.
They were thinking people would, you know, after church, oh, well, we didn't church on Saturday, but they were thinking that people come for the afternoon concert type thing.
Yeah, people are gonna stay for a concert, they're gonna go for the.
I was gonna say, if it's a nice enough day, it's gonna be, that people would probably come, grab lunch and walk through maybe and, and go back do their yard work.
Yeah, I like the eleven to two.
And I, and I asked um, another question, I said, well, why don't we try and line it up when they're doing the chicken barbecue?
Oh.
Um, you know, that might be more, and, and they thought it'd be too long. Because they have two different, they have a morning, a, a early day one and then a later day one, they thought it would be too long a time, so. But I don't even know, that could be the same date as I think the chicken barbecue is in June, and I don't know when.
Typically the end.
Yeah.
June.
Yeah.
I know.
So.
I, I like Justin's idea. Eleven to two, eleven to three.
I'll have to cook again, did it. About Old Home Day.
Yeah, and I think what they're gonna do is talk with Tom while bringing his grill, and I wouldn't mind cooking, you know, and. Um.
I can bring.
It'll give us a little while to finish up all the little odds and ends, like hang the soap dispensers in there, put the barrels out, put everything, you know.
Yeah.
Did we get the soap s- dispensers there?
Yep, we did, everything's over there. Um, I have made um, notes almost every time I go over there, something new is added underneath the stairs. Nothing can be stored under the stairs.
I, I, I reminded Mary that.
I thought you'd like to see that.
Um, they brought chairs from upstairs and put them there, and they thought they'd be good space, then they put, well, let's put the little one in the bathroom, I said, there, handicap bathrooms, you can't put chairs in the bathroom, so. Every day I go over there, it seems to be a, a repetitive thing, so I'll bring the chairs up and I'll bring the maintenance items upstairs and I'll. We'll let the people know for, Friday. Um, that they're upstairs in the storage closet.
I reminded Mary that there's supposed to be nothing under the stair, stairwell there.
Yeah, these items Mary didn't add.
Okay.
But one thing I did notice last night is they're bringing their um, they have a plastic sign out front that. Gives the library hours or whatever.
Yeah, more open type of thing.
Yeah, and I'm not sure why they're bringing it, they think somebody's gonna steal or whatever, they're putting that in the vestibule. Well, that can't be there if there's a function going on, cause it's an emergency. You know, so.
Well, if she closes, she can bring it in the library.
In the library, so.
Right, it's one of those boards that clo- uh, closes up, she just.
It's out of plastic one now.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just watched the girl during our meeting carry it in, but they're putting it in the entryway, you know, so the entryway has to stay free and clear.
They're probably doing that, cause she's the only one that's really open right now, but I think you're right.
It's in the front, once, it's only a week and a half, it's gonna function.
You don't wanna make a habit of it, cause it'll stay that way.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's the biggest thing, I think um. Uh, we, we would like to do, so that was the uh, open house day. Um, I think that those lawns are gonna be done probably the end of next week, because the.
Yeah, for the, for the record, I, I appreciate the uh, the loam and the dirt, the actual sand was put on the uh, near the driveway, it slopes down much gradually, uh, much safer now, thank you.
Looks very good.
Looks very good.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, David, or should I go on Justin?
No, I think, I think that's it for me.
Okay, Justin?
I think Joe Marie did order those buckets for upstairs, like during the house, there when I was there.
The trash buckets?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I called it on the Friday morning.
Okay.
And uh, I, I, you know, they were smaller than I thought, which I was kinda happy for.
Thirty five gallon?
Yeah, they're good, I mean.
And she asked me about bags, I said, yes, we're gonna need bags too, so she ordered bags.
The bag, I hope, uh, we should get, get the oversized bags.
Well, they're twenty eight dollars, I hope they're.
Well, I had to get the, the thicker ones, cause I'm afraid if they're, the thin cheaper ones, dragging stuff and breaking, and dragging like, you know.
Soda cans and all this.
Yeah, all that stuff down the stairs.
It's soda.
So.
Soda, sticky soda cans.
Sticky soda, and they're dragging the bags down the stairs, so.
So during the open house thing, they were talking about getting cupcakes with the hot dogs and burgers, and they're just gonna do waters. Um, keep it simple, but I thought um, instead of charging even like ten or fifteen cents, we'll just. Donate the food money, if you remember even Old Home Day, they only used three or four hundred dollars worth of food money.
I mean, out of our budget?
Yes, out of our budget, and just do it. I have no problem with that. I don't think, I, I can't imagine a huge turnout anyway, but the.
I don't think we have to emphasize the word free, I'll just say, ha- hamburgers, hot dogs will be served.
Can I get mine now? I wanna be here.
If they, you think we might get a bit.
We might get what?
We're gonna get a big rush of people. Old Home Day there was, okay, uh, anything else, Justin?
No.
Okay, um, Lean, if you could draft a letter to the uh, cafe here?
Yeah.
Either they remove the sign or they have it removed and that, and take away their permission to use the sign out there, okay? It's uh, up right now, I think it's, it's supposed to be.
Been up.
Say again?
It's been up, every time I go by it's up.
It's supposed to be removed at the close of business?
I know, I have seen it when, can I drive out that way, cause I don't like leaving on that side, cause it's dangerous, but. They'll lay it down, so sometimes I see it laying down.
I want it removed in, in any.
Can um, can we think about um, maybe allowing them to do um. Like those brown historic signs, so it's not like a sore thumb out there, but it's permanent, so they don't have to do that every day, because. It is a local business here, and I do like the fact that it's there and open and available.
Yeah, we do have it around town, you know, the tree farm with the tree sign or, you know, woodworking, yeah.
But that's not on town common land.
But this business is in the town common, so that's why I was.
Okay, but will you start that? I'm gonna wanna put a sign up too then.
If you have a business in the town common, you can.
Why do I have to be restricted?
Cause I just said so.
No, that's, that doesn't cut it.
No, I, I think the uh, at least the last board was uh, in your part of the day, we didn't, we want, didn't want something permanently up there, it's like anything else, we have. We keep political markers down and we, they asked for permission to put it up, I said, yeah, turn off already, I wasn't fine, and they removed the placard as, as, and even, even the um. If, if that's the case, we have the uh, the uh, curial shop, they put their sign up when they're open and they take it down, they're religious about that, I'm very happy about that.
Yeah, yeah, they are, yeah.
You can't, you can't make um, exceptions, because if you make an exception for one, you gotta do it for everybody. And I'll be there to fight for that.
I would just remind them and don't, don't do the whole lie about.
They're walking out there to lay it down, why don't they walk it over there? Cause the next day they gotta walk over there, you pick it up anyways.
Justin, comment?
I don't think you can really read the sign, to be honest with you, I pulled it in the other day and I'm like, I can't even see what it says on there.
You know, that, 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 that's something you may wanna share.
That's why I was suggesting a little bit nicer.
Yeah, you, that was constructive, what the?
Justin wants a billboard now.
It's a billboard. No, but I think it's uh, uh, we want a little bit of the policy, but I think it says constructive criticism, they want business, I think they, they gotta make a better sign.
I will tell you that that shop, when the people were working over here, the library people, the telephone people, these office people. It's a nice place to go get a sandwich when you're within town without driving all the way to Ware, all the way to Concord or Gulf Town.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree, but again, you know, anybody could buy Bill Zeller's house and do something with the barn and put signs out there then. Anybody can do that, anybody on the other side of the road should be able to put a sign on this side if they want to. You can't make arrangements with one person and, and tell all the people.
Leo, point, point taken, I think we're, we're in consensus agreement with you, because I am.
They could put a flashing bright light, a sign on there, front of there, and then people with eyes would be drawn to that.
No, I.
Yeah, but I think they're off the road enough, you know, they're not gonna see it from the road, they're trying to, because people drive it by.
But Ju- Justin brought a point up, I think Justin's point is constructive to help them. Take the sign down appropriately, but make a bigger sign with lettering to say, open for business, uh, uh, sure, sandwich, even sandwiches, uh, just refreshments this way.
Yeah.
They could do better, agreed?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, that's all I had.
We'll start there.
So are you thinking word leveling?
I'm just gonna pick up the phone and call them.
That's fine.
Get, get the inside down.
Anything else, Turner?
Oh, that's it.
I'm waiting for a motion. Motion to adjourn at eight oh five.
Eight oh four.
Eight oh four.
Eight oh four, so be it.